I call this special session of the employee council meeting to order Wednesday, March 11, 2020, in the City Hall Meeting Room at 9:15 Estoril Road. The time is 10:07. Will do your call. Allison Williams.
Present.
Joe Ward.
Here.
Jay Ritchie.
Present.
Tim Cox.
Present.
Lorena Vadas.
Present.
Yvonne Ward.
Here.
Nina Williams is here. Raul Villanueva, Kevin Pacheco, Josh White, and Rochelle Davis is not here. Joelle Lenders.
Here.
The following items will be discussed at this meeting. Discussion and follow-up on the pay equity and step plan. A grade adjustments and moves. B proposed hourly wage for grades. C proposed percentage between steps. D proposed time between steps. E steps based on anniversary or fiscal year. F steps based on evaluation merit and time. G after step 10 reached. And H current employees inter-steps at current rate or move up to the closest step. So, Joelle?
So, attachment number one, it says one in the corner, has them all listed. So, for A, grade adjustments moves. There were no further moves requested at the last meetings. The grade separation of EMT and paramedic was returned to one grade per position, meaning firefighter, lieutenant, and captain. And the paramedic additional will be taken care of with salary through the department. So, rather than separate those grades. B proposed hourly wage for grades. And in order to maintain the pay equity, the wages will remain as proposed. There were requested changes for wage increase at the January 16th meeting, and those were omitted. So, there was an extra dollar that was requested by police and fire for each step, not steps, excuse me, for each grade. And because of the work done on pay equity between male and female, and the work we did there, when we start adding the dollar per grade, we then have to go back and review the pay equity. So, at this time, we have left it as is. And any additional pay increases would need to be handled within the department budget, et cetera. So, at this point, that's where we're leaving that. Then for C, proposed percentage between steps. The large printout labeled number three. I have expanded out the different proposals that were requested. There's proposal one, two, and three. The small sheet is the current, that says number three, is the current longevity pay with the percentages based upon five, 10, 15, 20, and 25 years. In order to evaluate, I have evaluate, what is the word? I don't, fairly isn't the right word. I've extended the steps. We can relabel those as step one, two, three, et cetera. For our purposes, I have listed it at year one, year two, year three, year four, year five, as requested, and then expanded it through year 25 so that we can look at that end result at year 25 compared to what it is currently. And also to address the concern that an employee could never reach that max. And so, that's what that is. So, proposal number one was the request to have a 2% increase every year for the first five years and 3% every two years until the max, which would be 25 years. Proposal number two is a two, the same thing, 2% every year for year one through five, and then 2% every two years until the max at 25 years. Proposal three, this was just a, for example sake, was doing a 3% increase for years one through three, and then 2% every two years until the max at 25 years. And, and yes, and then this is the current longevity pay for reference. D is proposed time between steps, and that's included in the step above. E steps based on anniversary or fiscal year. And the decision from the last meeting was anniversary. F steps based on evaluation merit or time. The agreement at the last meeting was evaluation based on time. Longevity would be a better word there versus time, but that's how we had it. So, I'm just gonna add longevity there. And then G after step 10 reached. So, again, I mentioned that the steps were extended to match the current 25-year longevity plan. And again, after that 25-year reached in that current position, there is no guaranteed increase unless there was a promotion to another position or department. COLA increases or any other increases are not included on this step plan. One, they're not a guarantee. Cola varies if you're looking at it from a federal level. And also, they're dependent upon approval from mayor and council. So, at this point, we have our grades and our steps. And then anything after 25 years, again, without promotion or change in department, there would not be, we wouldn't add anything for COLA or any other increases unless approved by mayor and council. So, if someone was at, you know, the max at that 25-year, and then that would be their salary unless there was an increase approved by mayor and council, either COLA or otherwise. And this also, this entire process doesn't take into account any merit-based increases that the department head may assign.
You grab one of each item there.
Thanks, Josh. Okay, and then H, current employees inter-steps at current rate or move up to closest step. The employee would enter the step plan at their anniversary date. For example, if an employee has been here for three years and they're in grade D, they would enter at that year three marker. Employees enter, inter-step at their current rate. And then the next step would be ta, the next step taken would be at their anniversary. So, if they're kind of in the middle, they're between three and four, and yet they're at three years, at year four then, they would bump there to that year four. And then there is no credit or catch-up for past steps or percentages. That was asked as well. If you come in at year four, do you also get that 2%, 2%, 2% for each of those years? And the answer there would be no. I, the focus I would like to talk about today is which proposal, one, two, or three, you feel you would like to put forth to Carrie at the finance department for a fiscal review?
I have questions.
Okay.
First of all, as far as proposals go, since that was the last thing you mentioned, is there anything that says you can't just put all three up and let them look at all three? Because a lot of it's gonna come down to dollars and cents, especially on approval through council. And if they got multiple options in front of them, it's better than just a single take it or leave it, in my opinion.
I think probably my only thought process for putting one forward to Carrie is the amount of time, given that it's also budget season, to asking her to review all of these. So, that is, I mean, I can talk with Carrie and see where she's at with that.
It's just a thought, because we've all seen the city council meetings. And if you give them one proposal and they're like, nope, then you just cut your nose off to spite your face, is how I look at it.
Okay, that's definitely a consideration. Let's see, so now that I've finished the explanation for step one, then I will end that and move to step two, or not step two, the second.
I still have.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think he still has questions.
I still have questions.
Okay, well, okay.
The business minds kicking in.
Okay, well, I just didn't know if those would be more appropriate, Nina, under items two or three. But that's, you know, I just.
Yeah, because it's discussion, so.
Great, then we're good.
Looking at the step plans, the year one, two, three, and four, so if I'm following you correctly, if we got an officer or an employer, however you wanna look at it, that already has five years with the city, they're not gonna enter in automatically at the five year. That step's gonna start once it's approved, and then it'll be one, two, three, four after that.
That is for us to decide.
Oh, I thought you said that wasn't gonna happen.
Well, I mean, you're not gonna come in at year one, I mean, for example.
Well, you see, and the reason I ask that is at the very last point where it said no credit or catch-up for past steps and percentages, so.
So, then, yes, you are gonna go in at your year. If I'm at three years, I'm gonna come in at that three-year mark at my next anniversary, move to the year four.
Okay, and my last question, I'll say last that we have hoped. Does this account for the minimum wage increases? Because, again, I go back to my realm of the universe. You got the firefighters who are minimum wage on a 24-hour clock and all that good stuff. And if we go to a step plan like this, are they gonna, are we gonna now say, you're a salaried employee and that no longer applies to you? Or is it gonna be, because right now, the firefighters make almost three grand more a year than our beginning police officers. Through the step plan, they're gonna be making $3,000 to $4,000 more a year than our police officers. And I can't think of a single municipality where that's the case. And with those hourly grades going up and up and up and up and off, for what, the next, we've got three more years, I think, of those wages going up?
No, the 12 for the state of Arizona, that was, it was the buildup to 12. If, if there is a federal change, it has not.
No, the state of Arizona was 15.
Yeah, it was 15.
It was 15.
15 by 25, I thought.
That's what.
I did not, I thought that was federal.
No, that's state, and the voters voted on it, and that's why you got kiosks in Walmart and stuff now. But that's the case. I'm 99.9% sure of that. So, again, you're gonna be at $15 an hour. You multiply that by yearly salary, you know, I mean, it's all about retention in our minds. I mean, the rest of the city, yeah, granted, paying just deserves what you, you know, to be equal to other municipalities and everything we've discussed. But when it comes to retention, you know, you look at police and fire, I can't speak for anybody else, there's no other municipality that I can think of in this entire state where fire makes more than police. And that's just based off of natures of the job and what you do and all that other stuff. But our retention sucks, as you know. This, friggin' awesome, I like it, thank you. It'll help, but I think once they figure out I can go take a semester class at Cochise College and give myself a $3,000 pay increase, why wouldn't I be a firefighter?
I will say that the, if you look at the grades, point rating, hourly wage, and range base on the big one. If you look down the line on that, your firefighters are at G, which it jumps in hourly wage there, but it is relatively consistent with that range base. It goes up as expected. What this is not taking into account is overtime. It's also not taking into account overtime for police.
No, you can't, and you can't take that, because some weeks, there is some, and some weeks, there's not some. But I was looking, there was something somewhere where I saw that the fire was at $13 an hour on one of these forms.
The 13 is I, which is, do you want to have an old one?
I'm jumping ahead, but, but it brings me back to my.
It's paramedic, I think.
Yeah.
So, there's, you've got firefighter EMTs, oh no, 13 is lieutenant.
Oh, is that what that is?
13 is lieutenant firefighter. And then 14 is lieutenant, or lieutenant paramedic, and then the 16 is the captain.
And we're at H, right, which is 18?
Yes.
Okay, so, again, does it take into consideration the minimum wage going up? And 18, I get, if that's based off paramedic, I forget, that's okay, man, because 18 starting for an entry-level police officer is actually fairly good. So, then they.
So, that, that was the, this, the dollar amount that was associated with that step to do a slight bump.
Oh, yeah.
What I didn't include was the request for that additional dollar, which would have put.
Right, because what we looked at is everybody around, and I mean, is pretty much a 20 average. And we're like, we can't be at that, so.
And the unfortunate part of it is that to find a comparable to Bisbee, the size, yet the challenges with the layout.
Jerome.
Yeah, that's true too, and so that's.
They started at 42.3, I looked it up yesterday, because I was thinking about moving.
I, you know, all I can say at this point is, I think, when we could be here all day talking about wage.
No, and I get that, I just, my biggest thing was is taking into account that hourly increase, which is coming and cannot be stopped.
I, I will have to look into that, because then I think what it would do is it would just bump all of those grades down.
It moves them up grades, yeah.
Yeah.
The only thing I was able to find was that the proposition for minimum wage in the state of Arizona is that Arizona will hike the wage in $12 in 2020, and then for 2021 and beyond, Arizona will raise its wages based on cost of living. So, I think what you might be thinking of is the federal schedule, which is different from the Arizona schedule. And what has happened in the state of Arizona is that this proposition does not preclude cities from determining their own minimum wage. And so, like, the city of Flagstaff created a $13 minimum wage, and it's not against this proposition, but in terms of the state, I think it's staying at 12, except for cost of living, at least according to what I.
Okay, that was my.
Be very careful for legal.
Yeah.
Just to make sure.
Okay.
But anyway, I like this.
Okay.
And this is, I mean, this is a living document, because, say, minimum wage was increased to 15, we will all be back here looking at pay equity versus time served, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And what this allows is that it's like really a template for plug-and-play in terms of really looking at a fairness over time, but that it's a mutable document. And it's a living document, it has to be, right?
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah.
And, I mean, proposal, like, I'm gonna go from the layperson's look at not being a finance person, but proposal one looks, to me, the best for employees. And so, is, do we have proposal two and proposal three as a way to say, well, if you can't do that, then we would go down one? Or, I mean, I think that regardless, say, for all the employees who are year one currently in 2020, and that in 2045, they're looking at, you know, say, $37,000, we know that's not gonna happen in 25 years, that's not gonna be equitable. So, if we look at proposal one, it's the highest, but at the same time, that cost of living and minimum wage will change over 25 years. We know that this is low in the long term, I think. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, like, my only purpose is, I like to see options, you know? And for me, if someone went, well, what would 2% across the board be? I just wanted to be prepared with different options to look at. And also, it was to be able to compare to our current longevity and, and see where, where that end result is at year 25. And, and then also, I, if, if our, one of our main purposes is retention, then proposal number three with a greater percentage for the first three years versus five, you know, that, it, so I was kind of just playing with different ideas depending on, you know, what, where you wanna put your focus. Is it really over a longevity, or is it, are we trying to hook an employee, you know, stay here? You know, stay here, we've got these, you know? And if you get someone past three years, then what is, what is the retention rate? You know, we, I think we, I would have to really run numbers, but I think we lose a lot of people within the first five years, which is, again, why I think that every year having an increase would be helpful. So, in that mode of thinking, well, then, would it be even more helpful to have that little higher for the first three years and really, you know, grab an employee? Again, that was, I just like options. I like to see what's there, and then also to look at that end result and see, we're talking $7,000 on, on that grade A, and, but only like $3,000 on that proposal number two. So, anyways, it just, it was mainly just for, to look and see.
In terms of implementation, would, so this proposal would be incorporated, integrated into the department heads' budget meetings coming up, and that we would actually look at if we can implement this in this upcoming budget?
Ideally, yes, I mean.
I think that's amazing. I think it's, it's just such a great body of work, and it's so clearly presented. And I think that it really allows mayor and council, I think, if they need to understand, because what they're gonna see, these numbers under departments and their change, and in the past, you know, there's really just one number for all employees. And so, for them to be able to incorporate in this understanding, I think this is gonna go a long way towards giving them the tools they need to understand the position employees are. And when they vote on those budget increases, even though, I mean, affordability for our budget is in question. But I, I think proposal one makes more sense to me with the 2% over five years as opposed to the 3% for the first three years. I think that, yes, our goal is retention, but retention for long term, that we do want the amount of institutional knowledge that is encompassed in those first five years of really becoming settled into your position and committing, you know, to a long-term job. I, I really like the way proposal one looks.
Okay.
Does anybody else have anything else they wanna discuss? Josh, Lauren, Joe?
No.
Yvonne? Ritchie? All right, so we'll go on to item number two. Discussion and possible approval of pay equity, grades, and point rating. So, we're just looking at.
This one, number two?
Thank you. I was trying to remember what it is, two. Does anybody have any comments, questions regarding the pay equity, grades, and point rating? I'll take a motion.
To approve it? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the pay equity, number two.
I second.
Wait a minute, you have to do the pay equity, the grades, and the point rating, add that into your motion.
Okay, I make a motion to do the pay equity, the grades, and the point rating.
Okay.
Did it cover?
Yep.
I second that approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Joelle, that was a lot of work, we appreciate it.
Item number three, discussion possible approval of step plan to put four to finance director for fiscal, fiscal, sorry, evaluation.
Are we doing one, two, three? You gonna ask, do we need to table it?
I still think putting one forward would be the best option at this point. There is an incredible.
I like one. I, I do, yeah.
So, let's see, who likes, everybody likes one?
Let's see, Lorena, what number do you like?
I was between one and two, I guess.
Joe?
I like me, but I'm not gonna be difficult.
Yvonne?
On my own, one.
Timmy like one?
I like one, three-ish. There's two.
Yeah, I kinda like both one and three.
I just.
I can, I can, that's, I mean, putting two forward instead of three is, I think, I mean, I can ask.
Okay. So, when we make the motion, whoever makes the motion, let's put it forward to one and three, but base it on evaluation by, I guess, the finance director.
Okay, we'd like to make a motion that we send up, I guess that's a good word, the step plans for that under proposal one and proposal three for consideration by the finance director and the feasibility if they can do both.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Joelle, thank you so much, you did an excellent job.
Thank you, Joelle.
Can I?
All righty, so item number four, discussion of wellness funds from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Joelle?
Last year, when we changed from United Healthcare to Blue Cross Blue Shield, we were given a one-time $10,000 wellness fund bank. I met, Teresa and I met with Becky from C-Biz, the insurance company, to go over what we can do with that $10,000. Again, one time, this isn't every year. So, this is a really cool, just opportunity. What was interesting for me is that when I hear wellness funds, I think physical. I think buy everyone a Fitbit. That was my first thought. And what was neat is that you can look down on here, it's number four is what I'm on right now. There are multiple aspects of well-being that they all recognize. So, down here, we have physical, financial, purpose or career, social and community well-being. And it gives a little emphasis as far as what that's pointing to, and then ideas on how to spend this. I have also given this information to the department heads at last Thursday's meeting to have them approach employees. So, my work quest is that you look these over and talk to either your department head or just hit your employees. What would be fun? What would you want? What would, what would be nice? I mean, I, yeah, I actually think the Fitbit idea for everyone is a really cool idea, and it would promote health and wellness. But we could do, I mean, there's book clubs on here. Um, we could do, um, uh, like a wellness picnic, say at the pool. Or something along those lines, you can also, uh, we could partner up with. Copper Queen Community Hospital, and perhaps looking at, you know, setting up, I think it's called like a full. A full body wellness assessment, where they'll do your blood pressure, your blood type, your BMI, things of that nature, and you have this information. Kind of as, you know, a baseline for, you know, moving forward with your health and things, and so. Um, it really is up to you, and. I've, then on the second page, I have just the headings and the emphasis, and then some blank lines. And so what I would like, simply because we are running low on time, we do have to spend this by June thirtieth. Um, so, if possible, if I could get this back by next Thursday. And that's also when I ask the department heads to get it back. Um, and write down your ideas, I mean, another idea was a massage chair, like those massage chairs that they have in the mall. Like, put a, you know, I mean, it just, it's ideas, it's whatever, you know.
So, um, I would just like to, uh, suggest, um, when going back to your departments, that. We take into consideration a couple of things, one, um, as we do have to spend this, uh, by June. Um, that we perhaps not look at large social gatherings at this time. Um, I would just recommend against spending money on something that we shouldn't be promoting at this time. Um, for safety purposes, and two, that if we come up with, um. Some suggestions, like if it's to buy something like, um, gym memberships or Fitbits or massage chairs, whatever it is, is that. They actually make a, um, uh, option of three to five different things, because. A lot of people might already have Fitbits and not want one, um, do we put a massage chair at the library, I'm not sure. Um, so, that, and people who already have gym memberships, maybe that's great, because then. Uh, you could pay for that, but do they wanna switch gyms, so. Some kind of opportunity that everybody's, um, environment, schedule, and what they already have is different. And it would be really wonderful if we could just each, uh, pick something, so every employee is served. I really love expanding, um, professional development and training. However, that might not be appropriate for every single employee, so if we can find things that reach every single employee. Um, equally, I, I think that would be a really good perspective to approach this with our departments.
I guess my only comment to that is, I think finding one thing that meets everyone's needs might not be our best route. Um, we could look at putting a portion of it towards, um, training. And if you fall into that, then, then we have that there, um. And then, yeah, so I think, I, I really think it would be challenging to find one thing that meets everyone's need, it might be different things. Um, and also, this does not exclude part-time employees, so even though the full-time employees. Are, are the ones that have the Blue Cross Blue Shield if they elect benefits, though I did ask that too, cause my thing is, well. Are, am I only doing it for full-time employees, or am I only doing it, this for people who are currently have our health plan? And it's, it's citywide, it's for the city of Bisbee, if anyone asks that question.
Item number five, discussion and review of personal rules and regulations that were reviewed for updates and changes in twenty eighteen.
So the big packet is all of them. And it was requested that I bring these forward. For review, and then maybe making selections as far as what ones we want to bring. And actually start working on for approval. The other, um, positive resource we have right now is we now have enough members on the Civil Service Commission. To be a good sort of double check to get some influence and, you know, ideas on things. So this is a lot of information. But this is everything that was worked on, um, the only one I did not include in here is the, um. Probation that we've already discussed and agreed upon, so.
So if everyone will review these, and then at our next meeting, Joel, could you just put, um. An agenda item on there, so that we can discussion and possible. Recommendation for which ones we want to move forward on. And if we want anything changed. I think for the majority, I don't think, you were here or.
I wasn't here, but.
Okay, and I don't think Lorena was, or Josh, so. Yeah, if you could look those over, and, um, then we'll do that the next meeting, we'll do that, see which ones we think are feasible to move forward. To the civil service and then back up to the mayor and council.
Um, as well, um. This was sent to civil service, and they, uh, did come back with a lot of suggestions now, that.
All of them went? Really, okay, I'll have to.
Because civil service, um, the makeup has changed now, and now they have form again. But I believe, uh, Ken Budge, is he the chair? He's the chair, and so he had, um. A lot of comments that he had annotated with, and we had, um, invited them to. You know, just, uh, meet and greet, meet with civil service, and I don't know if it's possible to do that. Um, again, in person, but I think it would be actually really good to invite them to the next meeting and to have their input. Because it actually might save time, and they had a lot to say, um, for a small commission. And, um, there were a lot of, uh. Questions and, um, things under contention previously, so it'd be really nice to. Revisit this whole package, which is a lot of information, and to look at, um. At, at this with fresh eyes and with the fresh civil service, so I'd like to invite them if that's acceptable to everybody. And then also, um, with you, Joel, as our new personnel director. You know, really, I love to hear your thoughts and input on this, again, with fresh eyes, because. There were some things that I personally didn't agree with at all, and I thought, it's not that they shouldn't be addressed, it's that they should be addressed in a different way. For, from the employee perspective.
Um, additionally, um, another, the, so the civil service, yes, civil service. Committee had a meeting last week, and these were asked about, the policies, so I do believe that that is gonna be something they want to review. Uh, at their next meeting, which is April, um, and then also Jennifer Graham, who was the personnel director. Here at the city of Bisbee, and I believe had a big in, influence and of, of. Putting these, putting our personnel rules and regulations together, she is now on that committee, and I think that's gonna be really. Just great reference, great knowledge base, so.
Does anybody have any other agenda items they'd like to see at the next meeting?
Do I need to put an agenda item for, um, discussion of Carrie's review?
But only if she's ready. I mean, I don't wanna, I don't remember what our next meeting is, but. Your handy dandy, Joel, well, thank you.
May thirteenth, we may have to look at doing a special, special session in April after that. Civil Service Committee meeting.
I think that would be good.
Okay, so I'll look at April.
Alrighty, anybody have anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor? All those opposed? We are adjourned.